Hello, sorry for the belated start here. We are going to get started with a pledge of allegiance. Tonight is our annual budget hearing. This is my first as chair here. Going to start with a overview? We're going to run through it or? Okay, great. Okay. So Mr. Michael Trudy, our business administration is going to be administrator is going to be presenting Chatham Central School District budget.
All right, good evening, everyone. So tonight sums up the budget process that we've been going over since January. I want to personally thank all the finance committee and the board. Finance committee for attending all the meetings that we had before these board meetings over the last four months. So tonight I'm going to just go over a highlight of the budget and answer any final questions before the vote of next week. Hey, Sal, you can go to the next slide. So the proposed budget is a little over $33.6 million. That's an increase of 1.72%. That includes our bus purchases that we include in the budget, a small capital project which I'll discuss, that's $100,000. Contractual obligations, utility and fuel costs, health insurance premiums. So the main thing is we did try to keep the budget as low as possible, even though inflation was just under 5%, one of the highest of 40 years. So we worked hard to keep that low, the increase, so we could also keep a lower tax increase. New York State aid, a little over $7.9 million. I'll discuss that on the next slide. The tax cap levy, so that's the amount we could have went out with a 50% and one vote to pass. The budget was 3.48% this year. Part of that was driven by inflation. They allow you to use 2% as a cap of the 5%. But the proposed tax levy increase, we discussed a couple of meetings with the finance committee and the board. We want to try to, as we always do, is if we can, on a higher levy, is try to balance the school district educational needs with the taxpayer needs. So we were recommending 2.75%. This is the three-part budget. What districts are supposed to show this? We put it in our budget booklet and really what you can see here, 73% is for programming, which makes sense. That's where the kids for teaching, extracurricular, transportation, really the instructional piece. 13% administrative and 14% is capital. Our public library is included in that capital piece. These numbers are similar the last, you know, probably 10 years and similar to districts across the state. The next one. So, go back one. Oh, okay, yeah, this is fine. So the program highlights this year, there weren't a lot of changes in programming. We did reallocate a middle school special ed teacher to the elementary school. Brian Simon discussed this, our director of pupil services, and we all agreed this makes a lot of sense, so we can dedicate a special education teacher to the K1 students for a consistent education and, you know, really it's good to start early with them. So we all agreed with the recommendation. And then the other is a $100,000 capital project. We're looking at doing electronic sign up on Woodbridge. We have that manual letterboard we've had for, I think, 25 years. As you go around the state, pretty much anyone that has a sign, it's electronic now, so to come with the times and it's much more dynamic and put multiple messages on. So that's what we're looking to do. Remember, this is a project built in our budget. The last four years, we did security upgrades to each building. These are $100,000, have to be approved quickly by the state because it needs to be done and all paperwork filed within one year. So this fits that need and that will be, we'll be able to achieve that. Summary of the revenues that we discussed, you know, at the last meeting, we went in more detail, I'll briefly go through here. State aid, as you can see, is going up about $116,000. That includes our operating aid to run our school and then we also have our reimbursable aids. So those are the aids that we spend one year to get reimbursed the next year. That includes transportation, BOC's aid, we have building aid in that number. But the one positive for the school district this year that helped with that number being a little higher is that the operating aid, they had the governor allowed for a minimum increase, a mandatory minimum increase of 3%, which was higher than other years. Since we're a wealthier district, a lot of times we're getting like 0.25 or half a percent. So that was a good number to help balance the budget this year. The other revenue, this is going back now, the $188,000 decrease is going in line with what we had in other years. What that was is we took out an E-Rate project we did for Wi-Fi in the building. So what that was last year, we increased $192,000, the budget, but we also had expenses increased $192,000. So what we're doing here is taking that project that's completed out, it was one-time funding, and we're also reduced the expense side of the budget. So this includes interest income, our pilot, it includes tuition, includes health rebates, just kind of miscellaneous revenues. Next line's Medicaid. So this is the money that we get reimbursed for PT, OT and speech for IEP students that are Medicaid eligible. We've been trending around the $50,000 mark probably the last six years, so we kept that flat. Then property taxes, what we discussed, the 2.75% increase, that's lower than the 3.40% cap, trying to balance the needs of the district with the taxpayers. We appropriate 1.34 million since I've been here 10 years, so we appropriate that. And that's part of our reserve, financial reserve plan where we have contingent money built in for any unforeseen. So we try, our goal is to carry that over each year. So total revenue up 567,718. If we go to the expenses, as you can see on the bottom line there, total expenses, that matches our revenue, 567,718 or 1.72%. Couple of the lines I'll discuss, so general support, it's Board of Education, business office, audit legal, a big piece is the operations and maintenance. So pretty much we kept all the budget lines level except for contractual increases per salary. So we were able to come up at 1.63%, a slight increase. The instructional piece, so that's all the PK to 12 instruction, special ed, technology, guidance, boards, everything for our students, principals. You can see that's only going up 1.75% because we had a couple retirements, so we saved some money there. Transportation, 2.15. Once again, we did increase salaries and a little bit of fuel because fuel prices have gone up so much, but we were able to consolidate runs over the last couple of years, so we were able to minimize that increase to 2.15. Employee benefits, that's our health insurance, it's our teacher retirement and employee retirement payments that we have to make to the state. In this number, the health insurance went up about 6%. Teacher retirement rates have gone up, but the employee retirement or non-instructional rates decreased. So, and the whole, we're only going up 1.86%. Next line's debt service, so it's the principal and interest on our three bonds that we have outstanding. We've been trying, you know, our goal a few years ago is to keep this flat, what we put in the last capital project. So we pretty much did, it's only going down $2,000 or negative 0.19%. Then the last line, inter-fund transfers, only going up 12,719 or 1.38%. And what that includes, that includes our library, so our public library, it's about $400,000 of this number. We had a slight decrease in the library expenses. This also includes the cafeteria, once again, a slight, very slight decrease. It includes our bus purchases, which we're purchasing two buses, and it includes summer school special education, which was flat. So the expenses match the revenue from the previous slide. The next slide. So to sum up the budget hearing, proposed budget, 33618101 or 1.72%. It's one of the lower increases we've had over the last 10 years. Tax cap levy, 3.48, but we recommend it going at 2.75. But we are recognizing that there is, we're in a high inflationary environment, so we're careful with that. And then we have, next slide. Two propositions, the budget, 33618101, and also we are recommending creating a $5 million capital reserve. That's proposition two. And what we do with the capital reserve is whenever we have surplus or savings and we have our financial reserve plan with savings, we move money into that reserve. It's 5 million, doesn't mean we're going to fund all that, but over time, we try to fund what we can. So when we do a capital project, we try to use the capital reserve and the state aid money to balance it out. So fortunately, the last few projects have been no additional tax impact. So we did almost a $10 million project, we had 5 million in savings and a capital reserve, and we had received 5 million from the state, so there was no impact. So we're trying to get ready for our next capital project, that's why I'd like to do this. We do have one capital reserve, it's called Capital Reserve III on the books, so a little over 3.3 million left in that, that's maxed out. We used a little over 1.2 million on the last project to make that tax neutral. So now we're recommending to build the next capital reserve for the next project. Next slide. So we have an election will take place to fill four seats on the board. Candidates for the seats are Beth Hoover, Fred Hutchinson, Mary Ann Piero and Muriel Faxon. And, where in when, MED Elementary School Gym, next Tuesday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is the vote. And if the budget information, you can visit our budget information page at our district website. The Chatham Central School Budget Newsletter went out with all this information, and then we have an email where questions can go. And that's my presentation tonight. Do we have any questions here or in the online?
Well, just if you do want to comment or have any questions, there's a raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, we'll give you just another minute. There's no hands, right? Okay, so we're going to adjourn the budget hearing and move on into our regular agenda. Can I have a motion to, for approval of present agenda? All in favor? Okay. Now, we're going to start the meeting with a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak about items on today's agenda. There will be an open public comment at the, at the end of the meeting, at the end of the agenda. So if anyone wants to raise a digital hand or if anyone in the room wants to speak regarding today's agenda, we'll give you a moment to indicate, so. Okay, so we're going to move on, and the next thing on the agenda is to recognize Craig Simmons for his incredible contributions to the Chatham Central School District Board over the years. Come on up, Craig.
I want to thank you guys for inviting me back. It's, didn't seem like it was as long as it's been because time's been flying, but I got thinking, you know, what a neat little circle it's been for me, you know, to hurry up and get out of school, come back here and spend 10 years on a school board. Didn't make sense to a lot of people, but did to me. It was awesome time. Now I find myself back in my first through fourth grade school building and sitting there going, what is this trying to tell me? What's this life doing here? But it's all good and I'm so thankful for the opportunity I had as a student here and then as a board member. Taught me, totally prepared me for the job I'm doing now at the town. The only thing I'm lacking is all of you guys. It's, you know, there's days where I miss Deb and there's days where I miss Mike, there's days where I miss Sal, but they're only a phone call away. Been helpful, so that's what's been happening with me and, you know, thank you guys for having me come back. And I'm not far away, if you need me for anything.
So if anyone else has moved to speak, I think it'd be good to hear from someone else besides me. I've only, I only worked with Craig for a couple of years, so. We can, we can move on with presentation here of an entirely inadequate gesture.
That breaks me. I thought you were going to announce that sign. Craig Simmons, I've been after that thing for about, what, eight, 10 years? I saw you smile when Mike brought it up as soon as I read it on the flyer. I'm going to hook the chain to that once I was a board member and throw it on the next train that went by, so I had to do it, but I'm glad.
Happening.
Thank you guys, thank you so much. That's when I can leave, but I actually want to hear what the girls have to say. Stick around, I guess.
Okay. It seems maybe I did that out of order. I was very excited, Craig. We actually have board comment that we skipped, so. Board comment, does anyone want to say something?
I went to see Mia sing in a concert last week. Mia and a few other, the high school concert was wonderful. Very, very nice, very nice. What I noticed was, the, oh, what I did notice was, we seem to be back to our usual numbers now. The last concert I went to right after COVID was, you know, was, the groups were much smaller. But now it's, it looks like we're back in the swing, at least for the music department, I'm sure everywhere else.
That's great that we've got events looking like normal. We've got, we've got a graduation coming up, so people will be back to normal there, too. Okay, we're going to move on to a report from Mia Porat as the student representative.
Okay, so first I want to start off with like student government, so.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so we have our blood drive, which is on Wednesday, May 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., which is at the gym in the high school. And you have to be seven, if you're 17 plus, you don't need a permission slip. This is students only, by the way. But if you are 16, then you do need a permission slip from your parents. So we are really excited to do some community work and get our students involved. So as Ms. Faxon said, the spring concert went very well. We were maskless for it, so that was really nice, and it was just a very nice atmosphere. And then student government is also doing a Krispy Kreme fundraiser. Our Krispy Kreme fundraiser is always extremely successful, of course, so we are going to be doing that again. And then prom is May 21st. That's really exciting because we haven't had many events because of COVID, so we're super happy that we get to have this. We are also in the middle of AP testing and that is going very well, and I give all my peers a good luck to those that are participating. And then in terms of Arbor Day, I remember you asked about that last meeting, we have preparations for that with the senior expo, which is on June 8th, and awards night, and then a senior day banquet at Jackson's and a senior trip, which is on June 7th, which will be on JP Cruises. So we have all the senior activities and we are so, so happy that those get to happen. And then also, this was something that happened over last weekend, I'm pretty sure. Out of the middle and high school, there was a total of 36 students that participated in NISMIA. So big congratulations to all the students that sang there and participated. And then in terms of sports, the girls softball play Hudson tomorrow, Wednesday, at 4:15 for the semifinals in the Petron Conference, and they actually have an 18-0 record, I'm pretty sure, so that is really impressive. And then our boys, our baseball boys, who are number one in the conference, also have a game on Wednesday as well at 4:15. So I encourage everyone to go out and support our teams. That's it for me. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I was just going to add, the boys are 17 and one, so.
Oh, okay.
Go softball girls.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe for a fundraiser, we can have them play each other, see how that would turn out.
That would be awesome, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Mia. We are going to move into the superintendent reports from Dr. D'Angelo.
Thank you. As I look at my notes, some of this is a review, has been previously mentioned tonight, but our budget vote is next Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Mary E. Dartis Gym. We're hoping that we get a good turnout as usual. As Mike mentioned, the newsletter was mailed end of last week, so hopefully by now people have received it. In past years, sometimes it's taken a couple areas in our district a little longer than others, but this year we're a little ahead of the game because the budget was passed about a week earlier than it typically is. We also have our public notices and we've, we're in the final post-production for a video, the annual video that we put out on the budget, that should go out in the next, that should be available in the next couple of days. We have one final registration evening tomorrow from 2:30 to 6:30 for anyone who would like to register to vote. And absentee ballots are available by calling the clerk. Tomorrow is the last day that you can call and have one mailed, but you can pick one up as late as Monday by the close of business and then have to return it in person on Tuesday. For those who need that, please take advantage of the pandemic. Protocols were extended, so people who just simply state that they can't, are not comfortable in voting can get an absentee ballot to ship. We had the Queen of Hearts Dance back after a couple of year hiatus with the pandemic at the middle school. This year it was limited to eighth graders, which wasn't as popular with the seventh grade class, but we tried to keep it, keep the numbers down and by all accounts, including the photographs online, it looked like they had a great time. And it's so exciting to be, as Mia said, getting back to some of these traditional fun events. And I just, you know, again, the prom and graduation plans are underway. We did put a notice out. Traditionally, we invite the class who's celebrating their 50th reunion to join us for graduation. We did not do that, we put a pause on that for the last two years. So what we've done this year is we are inviting anyone who's graduated in the classes 70, 71 or 72, who's interested in being present at this year's graduation, to please come join us. They simply need to contact the superintendent's office and make us aware of their attendance. And you know what, I'm going to keep the comments about the fact that we still have a few positive cases popping up here and there. Just an announcement that we still have plenty of at-home test kits, so if any parents or staff members would so choose to still want to take, avail themselves to that offering, to please contact their building, their building, main office or the superintendent's office. And I was just handed, and I think from the ladies who are here, I don't know if you're, I don't want to take anybody's steam, but an invitation to each year, as part of the education, I think part of the education foundation, we produce an art and literary magazine and I believe Christina Scott is our advisor, is that correct? Do I have that right? Yes. And they are having a magazine gala on Thursday, June 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. right here in the high school. And that, that publication has always been an extraordinary effort on behalf of our students. And we always make sure that the board will get copies of that as well. I think that concludes my report for this evening.
That may have been a record on short COVID reports. Great. Okay, we're going to move to the facilities committee, or actually Chris is not here.
You really like it.
You guys want to fill in? Muriel, you want to start, facilities? Oh. Yes, C-Plaque first.
Oh, I'll start with that.
Yeah, start with C-Plaque and then go into facilities.
Well, we had, we did have a C-Plaque meeting last week, it was our, our normal usual, we had a couple of things we had to discuss. The first thing we did was our yearly evaluation of the librarian. And then the rest of the time, we discussed further plans about coming up and completing our strategic plan. Most of our meeting was on that. And we're getting underway with that around the 15th of June, and we hope to have the strategic plan completed by fall, what we're saying, August or September. So as that goes, as we work through that process, I will have some more reports on that. If you've looked in your, and I'm sure you did, in your consensus agendas, the library got a couple of nice grants, one from Berkshire Taconic for 1850 for a fall bilingual Storytime program and purchase of bilingual literacy materials for children. And this is all the public library. And then the Create Council, we got $1,600 for that, from them, for summer reading program for children and Fund of Ceramics. And that's, that's for children and adults. So Jen has been very busy writing grants, she's been very successful with them, and library is doing fine.
Great. Any updates on our community room and furniture?
We, you know, I did not go upstairs that day. The community, we had our meeting in the community room.
Oh, great.
And it was beautiful, fine, yep.
Okay. So the furniture moved out of there, then?
Yes, it's back to the, back to the.
Great. Okay. Beth, you want to add anything, C-Plaque?
Jen's doing a good job, I would say she's doing a phenomenal job.
All right, thanks. Muriel, you want to say a few words on facilities and then we'll pass the baton to Sal for an update there?
Yeah, I think, I left my notebook home, I did not know Chris wasn't going to be here, so the baton is handed to you. It was a great meeting.
I, I, no, I'd echo that, one of the.
It was a wonderful, wonderful.
Best meetings we've had in a long time, mainly because we're starting to build some excitement around the next capital project. So we met, the facilities committee met with, with our architects, including our site architect, and we've been narrowing down the building condition survey and reconciling it to identify the kind of shorter list of scope items that we think would fit and match an intended capital project. We're at the point where, having gone through that in a couple rounds, we've identified a list of items for which now, within the next few weeks, I'm going to be sharing with staff and soliciting feedback in terms of the items that we've presently identified as being more instructionally oriented. We, if you remember, we said that in addition to the not-so-obvious infrastructure, things that we've done at the last grant, this, or last capital project, that this time around, we truly wanted to capture some instructional enhancements. And so now we'll begin the process of working with our staff to take a look at some of those, get some feedback. I think they're going to be, some of them are going to be pleasantly surprised, we're, you know, there are several items that have been long awaited to be addressed specifically here at the high school, and we'll begin that process in the next couple of weeks. Again, we do have to be conservative, you know, we're not building a brand-new shiny high school by any means, but we're taking a look at some areas that I would say are tired. Some of our science areas, our tech areas, some of our entranceways, some of our bathrooms, some of our large assembly areas like the auditorium, the band and choir room, they're all going to potentially get some much-needed attention, but we want, I want to give the staff an opportunity to kind of weigh in and give us some feedback on the list, the proposed list that the facilities committee has begun to assemble. We would then narrow down that list and come up with a potential bottom line for the project. We, right now, are anticipating that we would then go to design and do what we call pre-referendum planning and hopefully bring something, a package to the community somewhere in the vicinity of February. and hopefully bring something, a package to the community somewhere in the vicinity of February to March of next year. And again, once we do that, then you know that the project is still a ways away. So anytime you talk about a capital project in a school district, it's never a quick process, and that's why we need to really get started on that. Right now, we, you know, we, we are planning the numbers and estimates we have, do have escalation figures built into them, because the numbers we're talking about today will conceivably be bid in about two years and probably constructed in three. So we have to plan for the potential that everything is going to be more costly than it currently is. And we have the next meeting, June, Friday, June 3rd.
Okay. Thanks for that update. We are going to move into new business. R65, be it resolved with the Board of Education designate the following list of equipment as obsolete in accordance with Board Policy 5250. Okay, and the full list is here attached. Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Questions or comments on R65? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. R66, be it resolved with the Board of Education designate the list of withdrawn library materials as presented by the Chatham Public Library to be eligible for disposal in accordance with Board Policy. This one did not make executive content, but. Is it possible we can update that? Okay, so we'll get this into public record, or it's, because it's only in executive content, but these are items that haven't circulated in more than four years. R66, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Questions or comments on R66? All in favor?
Aye.
R67, be it resolved that in light of the fact that the Board of Education of Chatham Central School District had to cancel April 26th meeting, and we did not have an opportunity to approve the, the annual BOSI's administrative budget, nor were we able to vote on the uncontested board candidates that are going to be representing our BOSI's organization. The Chatham Board would like to extend their support for, for RCG BOSI's, both the budget and the four candidates. R67, can I have a motion? Questions on that? Clearly, we weren't here that day. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we are into consensus agenda. R68, be it resolved that the Board accept consensus agenda K through M as written. Can I have a motion?
Second.
I would like to comment, really to, to thank both the Create Council and the Taconic, Berkshire Taconic organization for these grants. In particular, the Berkshire Taconic Foundation has really, they've been continuously come through for us, and they're an important contributor for us. Does anyone have any other questions here on K through M? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are into items for future agenda. I'm not aware of any. Does anyone want to floor an item for future agenda or future consideration? Okay, that was a quick agenda tonight. We are back in public comment for the second round. This is an open public comment for community stakeholders to speak about any issues concerning the district. If you'd like to speak, you may step to the front of the room or raise your digital hand using the raise hand icon. We'll just give you a moment in case anyone would like to speak.
Matt, while we're waiting, I just wanted to, it just, no pun intended, dawned on me that this is Dawn's last meeting, I believe, right? Because I think after the election, your seat will be filled, so I just, a personal thanks, brief but appreciated. I hope we didn't scare you away, but I just wanted to acknowledge your, your time and effort, and just greatly appreciate it, know that, you know, you're a part of our community and that you were willing to step in, and thank you for that.
I'd like to second that. It is, it's a little bit of a struggle to recruit these positions sometimes. And we got to keep warm, as we saw last meeting, and of course, keep our government functioning. So thank you for helping. Okay, do we have any digital hands?
We do not.
Okay. So with that. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.